West Traffic. There are so many traffic matters. And Tina Pascoe, all the years you've been with Mothers Against Drunk Driving, I served with that board for 10 years, and to see it continuing, to see that battle continuing. There are so many bars, cocktail lounges, and you look at the group of offices that are dedicated to do that, day in and day out, those miserable hours, because I've worked that in the past, and I know what you folks go through, and you have to go sit in court, and you wonder, does anybody care about what we're doing? Do we have any impact? Well, obviously, this council cares, this city cares. Continue the battle. There's a lot more to go. As Tina knows, you've been with this a lot longer than me, Tina, continuing that battle with Mothers Against Drunk Driving and the relationship that you have with the LAPD and all the wonderful folks that work the DUI operations. Congratulations to you. Keep up the good work. We care what you do, the city cares what you do, and know that we encourage you to continue that battle. And Wendy, thank you for acknowledging the fine work that these folks do every single day of the week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, the message we want to say today is not only to thank these police officers and Mothers Against Drunk Driving, but also to send a message to those individuals who would drink and drive. Where out there, you will get caught. You do it once, you'll get caught. If you do it twice, you'll get caught. And it's very important to send that message that a car is a dangerous vehicle when you have been drinking and driving. So, thank you so much, Madam Chair, for letting us present this today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. We have another...
I do, thank you. And I'd actually like to ask Councilmember Dennis Zine to join me up here for this presentation. Madam Chair and colleagues, I thank you for your patience today, but this is a very important resolution that we're presenting today. It's declaring October as Kids' Safety Month. Providing our children with hope for the future and tools they need to succeed in today's world is the most valuable gift we could give them. Children in the city face challenges that we could not ever have imagined when we were growing up. Now, more than ever, communities must work together to ensure that every child has a chance to succeed. In honor of Kids' Safety Month, I am hosting a number of events in my district to make Los Angeles again safe for our children. This is about safety around schools. This is about safety in your vehicles. This is about safety for kids, understanding not to go with strangers. In every instance, we are trying to educate the public about Kids' Safety Month. First thing we're doing is on October 16th, we're having a Health and Safety Fair, where we will have free medical, dental hearing and vision screenings, immunizations for children, preschool to 12, information on nutrition and fitness, on finger, excuse me, fingerprinting, child abduction, swimming pool safety, and anti-gang materials. Most exciting, we will be giving away over 60 car seats and having LAPD and CHP install them in the cars safely. We also are going to be working with neighborhood councils on how to keep children safe at school. When I was going to school, and Dennis, even longer for you...
Way back when.
Schools only had 400 kids usually that went to that school. They walked to school, it was in their neighborhood. Now, in some schools, we have greater than 1,200, 1,300 kids, and most of them are being driven to school. Oftentimes, we have parents who safely drop off their kids, but then forget about that safety once they drop their own child off. So, we will be working at every school in the city to ensure that we are enforcing those laws. We also are looking at kicking off an expansion on October 28th of a very successful program, the Valet School Safety Program. At 45 schools throughout Los Angeles, this has been an effective way where parents are able to pull up and drop off their kids at school. The valets will then ensure that the schoolchildren walk safely to the classroom and the parents can go off to work. And lastly, we'll be talking about safety around October 31st on Halloween and making sure that our kids are safe. But my colleague, Councilmember Zine, has been a strong leader in kid safety, traffic safety, through his work as an LAPD officer and as a city council member. So, I'd like to introduce Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Wendy. And thank you for bringing this to the attention of the people of Los Angeles and to our colleagues. The programs that are being developed and continuing to expand help the most precious commodity we have, our youth. And we look at the hazards around schools, we look at the hazards in our communities, and we look at how vulnerable they are. And just the news I was watching this morning, the morning news, there was a pursuit, a car crash, a number of people injured and trapped in vehicles. And this happens, and we need to prevent that. The valet program that was implemented, I believe it was West Traffic, the school valet program?
It was a combination.
Combination. I know it's starting to move and expand to other areas, and it's a wonderful program where the school itself, along with the police department, they all work together. I know the DOT program that's involved with the video operation for the people who are committing double parking violations, et cetera, it all helps. And when we can unite our efforts, as we're doing, to bring everyone together under that umbrella to protect our children, to make it safe, then we all win. So, Wendy, thank you for bringing this about. Thank you for acknowledging these folks. And hopefully, these programs will not only be here in Los Angeles, but spread through other municipalities and help, again, our most precious children. As you know, that little boy that you've got, someday he's going to be going to school, and hopefully, that valet program will keep him safe. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dennis. We also have, I'd like to introduce Olivia Mitchell, who many of us know I, she was my first boss. Terry Oga was first, okay. You weren't my first boss, Terry. What I'd like to present to you is a resolution on behalf of my colleagues. It's also signed by Councilman Zine, Councilman Vierigosa, Janice Han, and Tom Labange, as well as the Mayor of Los Angeles and Alex Padilla. This is proclaiming Kids' Safety Month. And these proclamations, colleagues and those individuals who may be watching, it's more than just something that is in print. It is about what we do, not only this month, but every day, to keep our kids safe. So, Terry, on behalf of my council colleagues and the entire, I know you're representing Children, Youth, and Family, congratulations and appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Councilmember Reyes.
I'd just rise to also thank my colleagues for showing this leadership and demonstrating the kinds of activities this city is taking to take care of our youth. But I also want to take the opportunity to let you know that, working within the realm of traffic and dealing with traffic issues, we've come across many incidences where it seems we tend to favor the automobile over the pedestrian, especially in how much time we allow for a little kid to cross six to eight lanes on major thoroughfares in the city. And so, part of our safety and our ability to provide a safe environment is in our hands. And so, how we challenge the Department of Transportation, all the traffic engineers to allow for the kids longer periods of time to cross those wide streets is critical. And so, I stand here to advocate for that publicly, to celebrate what you're doing, give you all the acknowledgement you deserve, but at the same time, really push those managers upstairs that push those buns that say how much time it takes for kids to cross the street, and give them more time. Not only the kids, but the seniors. And so, I just want to be emphatic, I want to be opportunistic, but most important, I'm being very grateful for your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Terry.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for acknowledging and recognizing October as Kids' Safety Month. And you're right, it's not the only month that we recognize, how important it is to keep kids safe. But I do want to recognize the two councilmembers standing next to me, because it's very important to acknowledge that what both of you have done is to recognize the importance of neighborhoods and communities coming together to make sure that their children are safe. And so, the two events, your Child Health and Safety Fair and your Health and Safety Fair, were initiated by the neighborhood councils in those communities, by the residents in those communities, and that really is very important. And the last event that we have coming up tomorrow, which is the International Walk to School Day, which will be at Trinity Elementary, over 1,000 children are going to evacuate from that school and walk to the Trinity Park, the Trinity Recreation Center. It's the first time that a school will be doing an emergency evacuation, and I think to get 1,000 children, an entire school from the school to the park will be an exciting adventure. So, we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to introduce Olivia Mitchell from Children, Youth, and Family. Olivia.
Thank you so much. Our emphasis here today is on our Child Safety Task Force, which is a group that we pulled together, really at the invitation of LAPD, to look at these issues about crossing streets, about parents dropping their kids off safely, and engaging and involving families. So, parents and residents of the community are trained to be there, to help them out of their cars, to direct the children inside. And that effort, which began at Malabar Elementary School two years ago, has now, as we said, expanded to over 30 schools through the volunteer effort and financial support of city council members and business leaders. We're looking, the commission is looking to expand that program under an OTS grant. The 45 additional schools, we've got some corporate sponsors who want to pick up 15, 30 schools, and the cost is essentially for the vests and the cones and the signs and et cetera, and willing parents. And we are engaged with our partners in LAPD in identifying the parents, supporting them, and working with LAPD, who does, and DOT, who do the actual training. The members of the task force are going to be identified, but it is important for us to know as a city that the school district, the police department, the Department of Transportation, Human Relations Commission, because there's some issues around parents and volunteering, the school police, the Safe Moves programs, who've made some significant contributions of bicycles and gifts to encourage parents, and our own Community Development Department to engage our community agencies and others in serving in this program. So, we want to acknowledge how important it has been to work in this cooperative, collaborative attitude so that more and more people, we have about 600 elementary and middle schools, and to say we're going to try to get to 100 in the next two years, and through our efforts to go to 200, and through your support, is important to engage our neighbors, engage our parents, to keep our children safe. So, we're going to have some specific introductions, both by Councilmember Wendy Gruel and by Councilman Zine, to the people who have been helping us directly to this point. And thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I would like to list a number of the people who are present here today. We'll not take time to give all the proclamations out here, but just to list those that have been supportive. And then, we'd like to have two officers, one from West Traffic and Central Traffic, speak briefly. But I'd like to recognize Liz Diaz from the Office of the Mayor, Howard Gluck, and Sonia Santana-Germain, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, Office of City Attorney, Anthony Bilu, and Brenda Martinez from CDD, from Central Traffic, LAPD Officer Martha Garcia, and John Vasquez, South Traffic, Jerome Calhoun, Luis Hernandez, and Dwayne Wilson, West Traffic, Leonard Johnson and Patrick Bailey, Valley Traffic, Luz Montero, DOT Sergeant Danetta Beckham from HRC, the Human Relations Commission, Gary De La Rosa from CUCYF, Gil Botello, Marco Garza, Barry Stone, and Eddie Farias, and LAUSD, Tanya Ball and Mary Freeman, LA School Police, Officer Ty Lee and Officer Eric Barr, and from Safe Moves, Pat Hines, and from, oh, okay, also Gloria Prado from City Attorney, thank you very much, as well. And I think, I didn't know if I saw Jose, is he here? Weezer, but Jacqueline Orozco from his office, from LAUSD, school board member. Colleagues, let's give them all a great round of applause for their efforts on the Child Safety Task Force. And just lastly, I'd like to ask Martha Garcia and Leonard Jackson, excuse me, Leonard Johnson, I have that, can't read, is from West Traffic, and Martha Garcia is from Central Traffic, to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Officer Johnson from West Traffic Division. And presently, I'm assigned to CTSU, which is the Community Traffic Services Unit. Basically, what we serve as is basically the same as senior lead officers. We handle all complaints in our area, which is all divisions, for us, Wilshire, Hollywood, West LA, and Pacific. This valet program came about simply because the parents were dropping their kids off in red zones, double parking, and in driveways. So, basically, for, I witnessed a lot of accidents at the time that I was basically patrolling the school. So, we came up, we, as all the, I'd like to recognize, everyone that came together was an all-out effort by the LAPD, DOT, the Department of Transportation, LA Unified School District Police, and also the Mayor's Office. We all came together for a common goal, and that is basically to make sure that these kids get dropped off and picked up safely around the school. So, we created, we put all our minds together, we sat at a roundtable, and basically, we got bits and pieces from all divisions, along with LA Unified School District and DOT, and also CHP. And we put together a handbook, which is a manual for valet training. And basically, how this work is, we go out, and I believe each one of you have a pamphlet on how to become a volunteer for the valet program. The way this work is, we get 15 parents, and basically, we go out, we do fingerprints, and we do the literature and the curriculum in this manual, and we train them how to become a valet volunteer. Also, along with the Mayor's Office, we also have someone mention about how kids get across the street. We also, with this program, there's a crossing guard program, which basically, anything that the DOT, the Department of Transportation, is not in their criteria as far as handling, like the number of cars and the number of pedestrians in that particular area, the LAPD do the training for volunteer parents who's willing to become a volunteer for the crossing guard. So, we basically got that covered on that end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Officer Garcia, and I work Central Traffic Division. All of this could not have been done without the hard work of the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. They're the ones who brought the whole program together. They're the ones that helped us make it uniform throughout the city, because we were all doing it, but bits and pieces. Now, we're all uniform, we have manuals, we have some that have the same suppliers, and everybody working together, we can make a difference. One, each of us doing our own thing was not progressive at all. So, thank you to everybody for all their hard work, and that's what makes this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Zine, and all the participants behind me.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gruel. Mr. Zine, are you going to be ready with your presentation? All right.
We have with us this morning, also talking about safety and participation and networking and people coming together, Canoga Park Neighborhood Networks for Kids, and we have representatives here, right? Okay. Barry Stone, Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. Barry, step forward. Thank you. Barry's the one that helped put this all together. The Canoga Park Neighborhood Networks for Kids, Canoga Park Health and Safety Fair in my district, is going to take place Sunday, October 16th, 9:00 to 2:00, at Lanark Park. And this particular program, last year served over 1,200 families. We want to invite people to attend, we want to acknowledge those that are responsible for this. Also, Canoga Park NN4K Neighborhood Network for Kids, also responsible for finding funding for the Safety Valet Program for six schools in CD3, the program we just heard about, the valet program. The activity that's going to take place on October 16th at Lanark Park, there'll be free immunization for children, a health screening, a variety of activities, art activities, music, giveaways, and since October is the National Child Safety Month, this is the most appropriate way to recognize and to celebrate that. There's a number of organizations that have come together to make this happen, this network. El Protejo de Barrio, Cal State University Northridge, Health Net, Canoga Park Branch Library, which they have a brand-new library, LAUSD District 1, Kiwanis Club of Woodland Hills, Canoga Park Branch Library... Hills, Canoga Park Branch Library, Child Care Resource Center, Department of Wrexton Parks, and Communities and Schools. We have representatives with us this morning, I hope they're all here, and we have certificates to present to each of them for their participation in this wonderful program. And again, we want to invite everyone, whether you live in the Third District or anywhere else, Saturday, October 16th, nine to two, Lanark Park, and I'm sure these representatives will be there, along with their associates, making sure that this program helps educate and helps the folks in the community that need that very important help. And in April, we honor the parents involved in the Safety Valet Program during the month of young children. Today, we are in the employees working on the program. A special recognition to LAUSD, without whose cooperation this couldn't happen. You forgot to add, but now we added that. Who gave me that? This late-breaking news. So, again, we're honoring the folks here today, working on the program, and we've already honored the Safety Valet Program during a previous presentation. So, the work of Children, Youth, and Their Families, the work of the community, the work of everyone coming together, is all about helping people. And we had twelve hundred last year, maybe we can get fifteen hundred or more this year. Lanark Park is a very large facility, it's on Topanga Canyon, just south of Roscoe, on the east side of the street, in the heart of the Third District. So, everyone's invited to participate and attend, and I want to acknowledge everyone here, and we will do some photos, and we'll also pass out some certificates. We have Rob Taborah. Thank you. Barbara Copeland? Thank you. Raquel Legas? Raquel, thank you. Barry Frederick Stone Jr. I like that. Barry Frederick Stone Jr. That's good. Junior. All right. Ernestine? Was he? Ernestine, thank you. Marilyn Joyner? Thank you. Curtis Woods? Everybody showed up, this is great. Pervot Attendants? Gail? Furkey? Percy. You gave that wrong one, right? John Fisher? John, thank you. And Janice Lake? Thank you, Janice. And El Protejo de Barrio? Thank you all very much. Did you want to say a few words? You don't want to say anything? All right. Well, then, does anyone want to say anything? Now's the time to speak. We want to acknowledge, we want to thank you. I'll let you hear it for everyone who's going to be putting this program together and all the fun work, fine work they did. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. And members, we do have one more presentation today. Let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Betty, what's comfortable for you? Want me to sit right next to you? Right there? Oh, yeah, yeah. Madam President, and members, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to sit here with one of the great city employees, our Betty Wilson. Betty Wilson's very special. I've known her an awful long time, and she's always made up the challenge, the challenge to help other people. And she's just recuperating from surgery, but she's here representing the Department of Disability today, as we salute yet another month to recognize the great work. As you know, the department was established in 1998 by this city council in an effort to focus on the needs of those who are disabled. And also, this department has worked very hard to develop and identify the population throughout the city of the disabled community, to make sure whatever challenges they have, we could work and help in that area. And also, this week, they are having the Access City Expo, Community Resource, and Employment Fair, where over two thousand people are expected to attend. This program will give important information to the lives of Angelenos, and also those with disabilities, or those families with disabilities, so they could pursue their challenges and work for their independence, equality, and freedom. Now, at this time, Betty, it's a great honor, on behalf of the Mayor, Mayor James K. Hahn, and behalf of this city council, to salute you and the great Department of Disability for your efforts and for this month, and I'll call on all Angelenos to be aware of the disabled challenges and help to advocate for improvements, to break down barriers so all could enjoy this great seat of angels. Members of the council and members of the public, please salute the Department of Disability on this month, as we salute Disability Month, and also Betty Wilson in particular, a great city employee.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let me recognize Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, thank you for honoring Betty and the Department of Disability, and highlighting the expo that they're having this week. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for what you do, and thank you for, again, the incredible outreach to the disability community in terms of opportunities in this great city of Los Angeles. I will take my time today to say, one area which I think we need to work on improvement is the outreach to the disability community in terms of our neighborhood councils. Ernest Hamilton, who's a high school friend of mine, is a member of the disability community, is a commissioner in the county on disability, came to me saying he feels like the one area where the disability community is clearly being left out is in our neighborhood council. And in fact, we're hoping that Greg Nelson, or someone else from Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, will attend your expo this week, and we're trying, at the Neighborhood Congress on Saturday, to also have an opportunity for the neighborhood councils to understand that that is one interest group that they have not outreach to in a significant manner. The disability community deserves to have a voice in our neighborhood councils, and so far, I don't think that's happening. So, I urge you and Greg Nelson to figure out how we can get the disability community involved in what is a tremendous project in Los Angeles, which is our neighborhood councils. But congratulations for all you do. That's the challenge I want to give you.
Thank you.
Well, Betty, you take that challenge.
Miss Councilmember Gruel?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Labange, but Betty Wilson and I have known each other for a very long time. She taught me everything I know about serving the disabled, ensuring that we were active, and I just want to thank you for recognizing her and the other activities today. But she's been a tremendous asset. She goes everywhere. She is somebody who, I think, kind of tells everyone about what it means to be disabled and how to work through it, and you've just been a great, a great person. And I have to tell you, I learned recently with having a stroller, okay, about curb cuts and places and things that we should be more, I think, acknowledging and noticing. But I just want to say thank you, Betty. Thank you, Tom, for acknowledging Betty and all that she does.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Labange, let's hear from Betty.
Thank you very much. Betty?
Well, thank you very much for this, for the resolution, and thank you for this honor. I want you to know that we are continuing to work with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and all the other city departments that we have established liaison with. We have a private-public sector partnership that allows this accessible city expo to actually become a reality. This is our fifth year, and yes, we have over two thousand people coming on October 7th at the LA Convention Center from nine o'clock in the morning to four in the afternoon. So, we invite not only the people from the disability community, but the entire community comes because they all benefit. So, thank you very much for this resolution.
Well, thank you, Betty, and that's at the Los Angeles Convention Center on October 7th, and all are invited to attend. Let's give Betty Wilson a great big hand for her great efforts. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thank you, Betty. Members, we are now going to go through our agenda items, and the first item officially on the agenda for Tuesdays is the Salute to the Flag. So, can I ask Mr. Zine to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Please join me, place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
First order of business, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Ms. Perry seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Ms. Gruel seconds. Those are also approved.
Madam President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
We do have one public, excuse me, two public comment cards that were received. Can I ask Mr. Candido Maris and Susie Meekins to come forward?
Good morning, Madam President, Councilmembers. Last week, I was in here with city workers, dedicated city workers, who are trying to improve the quality of life, the system that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, people that have been retaliated against because they're trying to do the right thing, people that saw an increase take place in our water and power, and who looked and said, maybe we can do something to make sure that doesn't happen again. And because they said that they might be able to look at a $600 million system of expenditures by the city and be able to reduce that, they have been paying the price. You heard from city workers talking about how their health has been affected, one woman having a heart attack, one individual whose blood pressure was so high. This retaliation has to stop. This morning, I had two individuals come to me and saying that they're going to go out on workman's comp. That is going to be a cost to the taxpayers. But this is continuing going on, and we're told that there's an investigation that is taking place, yet people, those individuals that come to work every day and who truly believe that they're doing better for the city of Los An, for the taxpayers, are being retaliated against. And I would like to submit some documentation so that you can take a look at, that when you are retaliated, they will even sacrifice the safety of city workers to make sure that you're retaliated against. So, Madam President, I would like to submit this, I will give this to the officers.
We'll have the sergeant take that.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have another card that was submitted, Lou Mitchell, so would you want to join?
Good morning, Madam President. With your permission, I will yield my three minutes to Susie Meekins.
Good morning, Council. My name is Susie Meekin, and I'm a member of the WIDEAC Committee in Watts. And I would just like to know, why is it that there was a project that was dedicated yesterday, which was never brought to the community, which we never voted on, and yet there was a letter sent out to the Tax Credit Committee saying that we all unanimously voted on this? And I just want to know, why is it that in Watts, we never get a chance to vote on our, what's coming up in our community? And all the meetings that are done, they're done behind closed doors, because if you don't know about them, they must be done behind closed doors. Now, we have all kind of housing development, building, you know, houses on three lots and all this going on, we know nothing about it. Why? Why in that community do you have no information on what is going on? And I would just like to know, and I will keep asking this question, and I got the letter that was supposed to have been sent, so I would like this to be passed out, and with this information to the rest of the council members, to say, to let you know this is true, we did not vote on it, and yet, they had the dedication yesterday. Thank you.
We will refer that to the appropriate committee for review. That does close the public comment period, and Madam Clerk, let us proceed with the items.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Madam President, there is a request to continue item number thirty, and that request was from Councilmember Perry for one week, which was October 12th.
Is there any objection to the continuance of item thirty for one week? Seeing none, that will be the order. This will come back to the city council next week.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a request from the city engineer to refer that matter to the Public Works Committee.
There were some cards submitted, but we did inform the speakers that it was going back to committee, and we'll work with them on that item. So, without objection, item one will be sent back to committee.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through eighteen. On item number fifteen, there is a majority and a minority report, and there also is an amending motion.
We will call item fifteen special.
And there is an amending motion on item number four that has been distributed, and also a request on item number twelve to continue that matter, excuse me, to refer that matter back to the Rules of Elections Committee.
All right, there's a request to refer item twelve back to Rules and Election. Is there any objection to that? If not, that will be the order. Then, we do have items four through eighteen before us. Fifteen has already been called special.
I'm sorry, that was two through eighteen.
Two through eighteen. There are, public hearings have been held on these items, so it would take a vote, a motion from the council floor to open the public hearing. Any specials? Mr. Labange. Item fourteen called special by Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine?
Item three, please, and also, I'd like to continue item eleven for one week.
All right, item three is called special by Mr. Zine, and item eleven, there's a request to continue that one week. Without objection, we'll have that as the order. Mr. Weiss?
Give me half a second. You know, on item four, I've circulated an amending motion. That could go on consent, and so I would just note the motion, I don't need to call it special.
All right.
But I would just note the motion and ask for approval.
There is a motion that Mr. Weiss has made, amending it. Item four, we'll include that as part of the committee action. So, those items are now before us, with items three, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen called special. Excuse me, twelve was sent back to committee, so.
Madam President?
Three, yes, Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to continue sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen for thirty days.
Is there any objection to the continuance request for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen for thirty days?
And the new date would be November 5th, and I.
All right, then that will be November 5th for those three items. Any other specials?
Madam President, there's a problem with the voting. Could council wait for just a moment, please?
All right, I believe we are now ready for the vote on the remaining items, two through eighteen. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, items nineteen through forty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for.
Items nineteen through forty-one are now before us. Any special, there are no cards, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing on those items. Other than thirty, and that one was already continued. Any specials? Any specials, members, nineteen through forty-one? Seeing none, then those are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved.
The next items on the continuation agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items forty-two and forty-three.
Items forty-two and forty-three are before us. Mr. Labange would like forty-two continued one day.
There is an amending motion on that one, so the entire matter will be continued for one day.
Forty-two with the amending motion will be continued for one day. Item forty-three is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter's approved.
On the next item, Madam President, is item for which public hearing has not been held, item number forty-four.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We continue that from last week because we have family members that wanted to be here when we make this presentation, so we'd like to call it special if we, or take it out of order so that we would not delay them.
So, the family members are here now?
Yes.
All right, if there's no objection, we will call item forty-four special and take it out of order at this time. Let me call on Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a very special issue that affects the Eighth District and all of our areas dealing with violence. Just July 6th of this year, we had a. in all of our areas dealing with violence. Just July 6th of this year, we had a 13-year-old, Joseph Fleetwood Callaway, that was murdered on West 79th Street at South Figueroa with no clear indication of why or suspects that have been identified on this case. As you know, the seriousness of violence, and no parent really expects ever to bury their child. We asked to have Mrs. Clay and asked her to come up at this time at the podium, and also—Ms. Clay is the mother of Joseph. Also, his godmother is here, Antoinette Jordan, and his youngest—younger sister, Desire Jackson, and the brother-in-law, Devion Hickembottom. And Mrs. Clay would like to just make some comments about what she's experienced and also for the general public in asking that they assist in bringing this case to a conclusion.
Well, what I went through, I wouldn't want anyone to go through. We're asking for the public—okay. We're asking for the public to help us find the person that shot. Thank you. My 13-year-old son, he had just turned 13. He just graduated. He was on his way to high school, and no one to help us. Nobody will help us, and I know somebody saw. And we just need for someone to come forward and help us. And he didn't deserve to be shot 12 times, and we need—we need the help. We need you to help. And we just need the help. I need this for my peace of mind. I need to know who shot and killed my son. I can't even believe that I'm here, having—to do this. He was such a smart kid. He was—he was so sweet. Not only was I his godmother, I was his Sunday school teacher. He was very—I have four kids of my own, three which are boys, and they all hung out together, and they did nothing but played basketball and played video games, and that was it. He went to all of my family functions. Anyone that he met was either ma'am, sir, aunt, or uncle. He was so sweet. We would go to grocery stores, and if there was a lady there by herself doing her groceries, he would ask her, "Do you need help with your groceries?" He was just a good—he was a good kid. I mean, he was smart. How many 13-year-olds do you know have been, you know, skipped up to high school? He was supposed to be starting his first day of high school on the day that he was shot and killed. A lot of kids—he hung out with us a lot, so when he was off track, I would take him sometimes to my kids' schools. And a lot of the people there at the different schools, Poly High School and Tentr Preparatory out in Long Beach, they knew him, because he was a kid that would just be up there playing basketball with my kids. And when they found out, a lot of the kids and the staff took it really hard. I just—I just beg that you guys would vote positive on this, because think about it, if this was your kid, your niece, your nephew, your grandchild, you know, who did nothing. He wasn't a gangbanger. He, like I said, he only played basketball and video games. He went to every activity at our church. He was—he was just a sweetheart. And it just makes no sense that a person could take someone's life and still walk on the streets and, you know, not think—you took someone's life. You didn't even bring this—you didn't bring this child into this world, and you've taken them out. You've taken them from their mother. You know, you've taken them from his dreams, his passions, his desires, you know, was to play basketball. I mean, he was so excellent at basketball. It was amazing. It was amazing. And now that dream and that passion is gone. It's gone, never to be here again, you know. He could have been our future Michael Jordan or, you know. He could have been sitting here on the council seat. He was so smart. But that has been taken away from someone who was so cruel and didn't think, you know, didn't consider someone else other than themselves. Now he's gone. And my prayers is that you, as a council, can do whatever you can on your part, and that the public can also do whatever on their part to find the person or the persons that shot him 12 times or more, for whatever reason, we still don't know. But please, please, I beg of you, whatever you can do, please help us. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Anything else after that, except that we have today a motion to have a $50,000 reward and hope that not only the impassioned plea of the family, but whatever it takes for individuals that would come forward to assist 77th Detectives in solving this case. A 13-year-old who the family, at this time, cannot expect that he will ever fulfill the dreams that they had set out for him, a family that cannot celebrate birthdays, cannot celebrate holidays. Certainly, the one thing they're asking is we do all we can to solve this case. And so, I'd ask that we have an aye vote on this reward.
Mr. Vierigosa.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, for bringing this forward, and thank you, Ms. Clay, Ms. Jordan, for the courage to come here to City Hall in the way that you have. I think it's important for all of us to hear this story, because when people read the paper or watch the news, they think all the kids that are getting shot and killed in the city are gang kids. They have no idea that many of them are god-fearing, good children, good sons and daughters, productive young citizens who have a whole life ahead of them that's just been terminated with a flash of a second. And so, we thank you for coming. I know it's difficult to be here, and we're committed to working with you to ensure that we find whoever did this. Thank you.
The motion or the matter is now before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That matter is approved, and we will send it forth with. Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number 3 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. On this item, and I know there's some representatives here from both sides, the nationwide and Great West, we heard this in committee. It was a packed room at the Department of Public Works hearing room. On August 17th, the Board Deferred Comp took a vote and chose a plan administrator, which was nationwide. And the next day, many of us were bombarded from city employees who participated in the work comp plan—the deferred comp plan, I should say, and they were very unhappy with what took place. We had a lengthy hearing, heard from the CAO, heard from the Personnel Department, and the bottom line is, the system was flawed, the procedure was flawed. It didn't really measure up to what it should. And we finally resolved, it was unanimous vote from the Personnel Committee, that we have a recommendation to send this back to the Board Deferred Compensation to start over, to do another RFP, to find out, number one, what the members in the deferred comp plan want. There was never a survey done of the deferred comp participants, which is one of the requirements. So, due to the flawed process, in everyone's best interest, it was unanimous recommendation that we send this back. So, I would ask that we send this back to the Board Deferred Comp with a recommendation to redo the RFP, cancel the RFP, and redo it. I know it's going to take some time, but we need to do it right. We do it right because all the money involved is the money that the city employees put in. It's all their money. There's no city match. There's no taxpayers' match. And there was an outpouring of anger from city employees. And again, we have agreement from the Personnel Department, also from Mr. Fujioka, that the system was flawed. So, that'd be my request. I also am going to introduce a motion that will modify the administrative code to call for specific terms of service on the Board of Deferred Compensation, so that the elected members will have to be approved by the participants on a regular basis. Another change is suggested by the CAO. This will be considered by Personnel Committee on a future date. So, I ask you to veto the recommendation from the Board Deferred Comp with a recommendation to do another RFP. And I know we have—I hope we have June Gibson. June here? June's not here. June's here? If there's any questions for any of my colleagues, and also Tom's here, Colts is from the Personnel Department, any questions that need to be answered. If there's anything I didn't cover, June or Tom, regarding this, if you can add to that.
All right.
I think the presentation was very comprehensive.
Comprehensive, thank you. So, maybe we should just take the vote and send this on.
Staff is here. Staff is here for any questions. At this time, let me recognize Councilmember Gruel.
In the essence of being brief on this, I will support Mr. Zine. We did have a long discussion in the committee last week. I think we had more people—no disrespect to you, Ms. Misakowski—but they were there on that than they were on the airport at the same time in this room. But I think that it is clear, and from the CAO's report, and that Personnel agree that the process was flawed, and this will give us an opportunity to correct that and to ensure that also the individuals who are the participants have an opportunity, and they have the survey. And I think that this—I want to just thank Mr. Zine for his leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to comment on this issue. Having been a member of the deferred comp for almost three decades, and at one time, I think I either had the longest tenure or the most amount of money in it at one time. But one of the things I think we have to remind ourselves, and go back in history, about five years ago, the City of LA—and I have to say, deferred comp is one of the best programs the city ever put together. Five years ago or so, the same board made a decision to merge the two plans. We had Hartford and Great Western. Hartford plan outperformed Great Western by leaps and bounds. But a decision was made, and we had the same protests, and I was one of those who protested, "Why would you take my option away from me if I have a better plan?" And the decision was made and agreed by the council to put it all into one plan. And everybody said, "At some point, you're going to be unhappy with one plan because you don't have the options." Five years later, we have a proposal go out, and one of the things that I understood about the proposal was that it specifically identified service as the number-one element. I think it was 40% of the score. This is something that many people, including myself, had complained about Great West from the duration of them being in business, because their first answer to you when you want service is to go on the computer and use the website and make your decisions about your plan. And my question to them was always, "If I could use the computer and I could make decisions about my plan, I wouldn't need them as a resource." And they have not done a good job as it relates to the service level. We put out a RFP, and the primary and the largest grading point dealt with service. And then, once four to two vote with one abstention, comes back and say they've granted a contract to the company that gave the greatest service, the service that identified that they intended to talk to every person in the plan at least two to three times a year to find out what they were—they wanted to do with their plan. The only time that I was able to get a personal contact from Great West is when I retired from the Police Department and said I was removing my money to a private plan. That's the only time an individual took the time to call, and they only request was, "Don't take your money out." And when I then moved my money to another plan, the first thing that the plan advisor said is that, "You did the right thing, because not only were you in a plan that was going nowhere, that you shouldn't be in a plan where about almost 50% of the proceeds are almost in a passbook account, which you could get just at the bank." And so, this is something I think we have to realize, that this company, in five years, to my personal expectation, was poorly handled. They did not give the service. And when we asked in a new RFP for service, it is going to cost more money, and it is unfair to ask a company to spend the money and go forward and to answer a RFP and then come back and say, "Because you're the only one that gave the additional and increased service, we're not going to comply." The other issue I think is important to realize, we're in litigation in this city on one issue that all of us remember, that we've had at least five times with the commission, and that was that the Kaiser towed RFP. And we made a decision as a group not to go back, even though there was at least two, three pages of material about administrative faults, administrative errors, and we said, "No, let's stick with the RFP because we had a requirement." Now, we seem to be reversing our feels, saying, "There's an administrative oversight, so let's change the process and go back." I think we're just adding fuel to the lawsuit that's pending with Kaiser. I think also we may need to look legally as to whether our imposition into the fiduciary responsibility of this board in altering their independence is something that will create other litigation for the city. And so, I would say that having been a member, and maybe the longest-standing member in this horseshoe as it relates to deferred comp, I would just hope you'd listen to my personal story as to why I made those decisions and why I believe that the biggest deficiency in the Great West is their total lack of responsiveness as relates to service. And when we had Hartford, we did not have that issue, and now that I'm in a private plan, I don't have that issue. But this is something in which—it is not something that you can rely on the company, but they need to have a much larger personal involvement in helping people to commit their funds. The minor amount of money that's being paid on a monthly basis, you will get back 15-fold at the time of retirement if it's managed properly. But this is something that I believe is short-sighted and was certainly inconsistent with the record that we had at least a few months ago as to why we did not change the Police Department recommendation on an RFP and send it back. And that's all that was requested, not pick—
Mr. Parks, could I ask you to sum up?
Not pick another term—another selection, but merely to send it back for re-review. Thank you.
Let me recognize Mr. Zine for a second time.
Thank you. I've also been involved in that plan since the mid-'80s. I've never had any problem when I've requested information, but I don't have that much money in the plan anyway, so it really doesn't matter that much. But they have responded to my questions. Number two, when 6% to 15% of the participants ask for information, and what we were hearing over and over again from the participants in the plan is, "They don't need the information. They want to make their own choices." And I understand the service there's also Great West provides, and I discovered this in a recent brochure, seminars that are held throughout the city if people want to attend those. But it's like talking to a stockbroker. They don't have a magic wand. They'll give you advice. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But the thing that was flawed with this is, there was never questions by the members, the participants in the plan, what they want. Do they want more service, or they want lower rates? Do they want more return on their dollar, or do they want lower rates? And there was an outpouring from the participants that they were satisfied with the service. They had no complaints in the service. We have a fact—a stack of emails, not upset about the service, but their whole issue was, they didn't want the rate increase. And the survey would show, what do the members want? What do they actually want? And that's where the system is flawed. That survey was never conducted. So, you need to know what your customer wants, so you can deliver that, and that's where the issue is. And Councilmember Parks apparently didn't have satisfactory service with Great West. I understand that, but the hundreds of emails that we received, people were very, very satisfied with the service they're receiving. So, again, the flawed system is, it didn't follow asking the customer what they wanted. And Tom had a great statement. He said, "It's like going out and buying your wife a car. You go out and you buy her a car not knowing what she wants. Come home with a red Corvette, and she wants a station wagon for the kids." So, we need to find out what the customer wants. And Tom, next time, don't buy the red Corvette, buy the station wagon. Thank you. She wants the Corvette.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. That is the final. Mr. Ludlow would like to speak.
Just a point of disagreement. I think she wants the Corvette. I think she wants the Corvette.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to underscore one thing moving forward. I think it's clear where this is going, but one of the things that I think is very important that this entire council has spoken about too, is making sure that we have genuine follow-through with our maybe-and-we-be goals. In redesigning how this is going to go back, can you detail what that might look like? In redesigning how this is going to go back, can you detail what that might look like when we put this RFP or RFQ out again? Is it going to be the same as last time?
I think with regards to MBE, WBE, we will be, we will be following the advice of the city attorney on that issue to put that perfectly in place as it relates to meeting our legal requirements for what we can and cannot do under MBE, WBE. So how we will structure that RFP will be specific to ensuring that compliance is reached.
I know this has been frustrating for a lot of city employees. I know this is frustrating for the bidders as well when we have to go back and do this because we didn't design it the right way. But a lot has been said on that, so I'm not going to take everybody's time. But I do hope that we have a genuine effort and that anybody who's going to submit their bids here, be it nationwide, Great West, whoever it is, really put a good faith effort in there. This is one of the most critically important areas. And as we've looked at, you know, I've done some work with Montezuma Esparza and the Latino community about how our pensions and our deferred comp and our financial services industry still is a place where minority owned businesses and quite often women owned businesses have been left behind. This is an area where we really can make a huge difference in amounts of money that we're talking about. Our money and city employees is a critical place to make that change. So I would just put that admonition out to anybody who resubmits, if that's the direction that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. There's no one else wishing to speak on the matter, so we have the committee report as presented and recommended by Mr. Zine before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
That goes forward. We'll send that forthwith. Let me recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to reconsider item number two from Friday, October 1st agenda. Only 11 members were present to consider this matter, which was an ordinance requiring 12 votes upon first reading. Madam President, I would therefore like to move that this city council reconsider this item, approve it, and send the matter forthwith to the mayor's office for the purpose of passing the ordinance with 12 votes.
Is there any objection to the reconsideration of item number two from Friday's agenda?
And for the record, Madam President, that's council file 041894, and it's a zone change and general plan amendment in Council District 7.
All right. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. Item two from Friday's agenda, the zone change in CD 7 is now before us with the ordinance. Seeing no further public, no further comment, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved, and we will send it forthwith. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number 14 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members. I just wanted to tell you that the EZ Pass, which should be developed between the city and our municipals throughout Southern California and our LA DOT, will allow people who use transit to slide between all levels of transit. And it's something I just wanted to call your attention to, the importance. Phil Aker, come up here and give us one quick minute right here from the Department of Transportation. He probably hopped over in the dash, right, Phil? City Hall shuttle.
Phil Aker from the Department of Transportation. The EZ Pass is an innovation of the Metropolitan Transportation Authority and 17 other transit operators in Los Angeles County. It's a single pass, it's available in adult passes, a monthly pass, and a senior disabled pass, which is half price. And it can be used on any one of the 17 carriers plus Metro. So it means a seamless ride throughout LA County. In addition, the MetroLink media, that's the monthly pass, the 10-ticket ride, the daily pass, and the round trip pass are accepted on the bus systems and Metro as an EZ pass. So it's actually opened up tremendous opportunity for people who ride MetroLink to come into downtown, for example, and then to go to lunch using their MetroLink media rather than having to pay a dash fare.
Are they going to be swipe cards too?
They're currently a paper pass, but they will be a swipe card.
Imagine there'll be a swipe, you could read, like a phone calling card, you could buy a transit card, and boom. So members, I just wanted to, another step, the Department of Transportation in conjunction with the Metropolitan Transit Authority, we're moving forward to get it easier to use transit in Los Angeles. Call for an eye vote. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Item 14 is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to request we can move forthwith on item 43.
Without objection, item 43 will be sent forthwith.
The next item before council, item number 15, there is a majority and a minority report, and there is an amending motion that applies to the minority report.
Let me recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to move the minority report with a technical amendment using the word existing part of the word DWP so that reads inclusion of existing DWP hydroelectric. With that, members, I'd like to bring you a little bit up to speed on some facts that occurred during the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee where this item was forwarded to the council floor. Please understand that this motion does not exclude the energy from the Hoover Dam. Hoover Dam is online. Hoover Dam is an important part of the mix of energy that we get here from the Department of Water and Power in Los Angeles. So this in no way precludes us from using the energy from Hoover Dam. What it does do, though, it does say internally whether or not we're going to use that energy on the ledger of renewable portfolio standard, of which we've all, we've all said that we're committed to embarking on here in Los Angeles. The department estimates already took into account having Hoover online, but not counting it toward reaching our goal of cleaner energy of 20% renewable portfolio standard by 2017. For example, including Hoover online but not including it on the ledger, the department has already reported to us more than once in our committee that the average person by 2017, their household bill is only going to be affected by $3. Once again, that already includes Hoover in there, it just doesn't include it on the ledger as a renewable portfolio standard. And also, let's also support this compromise, because it is a compromise, because Sacramento has given us the authority and the ability to go ahead and tailor our own renewable portfolio standard. But at one time, Sacramento has not been amenable to that. And we compromised, when I was a legislator in Sacramento, to allow the municipal authorities to tailor their renewable portfolio standards in a way that they see fit. And that's what this compromise is. It's exercising that right. We don't need to go down that path of not at least adhering to in some way and recognizing that Sacramento has certain standards, and we're actually recognizing those standards to a certain degree in this compromise. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Is there a second on the minority report?
Second.
Second.
That's a lot of seconds.
Yeah, there's a second.
Okay, first up would be Councilmember Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I am going to move a substitute for the majority report. And members, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and I think it boils down to a simple thing. Mr. Cardenas is right. It's not as if Hoover goes away. And it's not as if Hoover isn't clean renewable resource power. It is. It's just very big. It's so big that if we say we could count it or should count it in achieving a 20% renewable energy, which this is, we'd be 2.5% of the way there. It's 2.5% towards our 20% goal. There are those who say, no, since we've already done it, don't put it in the goal and get 20% all-new power, then we'd be at 22.5%. That's the difference. Should it count in 20% or should it not? It is clean. It's renewable. Secondly, all other municipal entities in the state which have Hoover have counted it. Why should we put ourselves at a disadvantage when others have done it? Third, we know that renewable portfolio 20% goal is a good thing, but today we know it's going to cost our ratepayers. We're saying it's an important thing, it's good for the environment, it's a goal that we should achieve. What's the difference if we include Hoover versus not including Hoover as a projected cost today additionally to our ratepayers? Additionally, if we count Hoover as 2.5% towards that 20%, it's expected that by the year 2017, with Hoover, our ratepayers will pay $2.60 a month more. That's a month. And we just heard a whole lot from our ratepayers as we went through a recent rate increase, and they weren't too pleased with it. If we don't count Hoover and have to make up that 2.5% difference, which is there, is being provided, will come through, that goes up to $3.18 a month. So we're talking about a 58 cent a month difference over something that's already going to increase. Should we increase their bills projected from $2.60 to $3.18? And members, again, our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility is to our ratepayers. It's not bad power, it's clean power. Other municipalities count it in their goal. And by not counting it, we are recognizing that that, that is going to be boosted up on our ratepayers to provide clean power, is going to be boosted up further. Those are the simple reasons why I voted to say that I think we should count Hoover. It's not bad. This is not a good thing or a bad thing, as one would, has been perhaps presented. It's a question of how seriously do we want to acknowledge that that we know? And I think it's interesting, and members, I think we ought to be frank about it. Many who are supporting this are people who didn't support the current rate increase. So we can't have it all ways. We have to be honest to ourselves, have to be honest to the future, have to be honest to the public, that this decision today is an increasing cost on our ratepayers, which we know in general we're going to be increasing, it's a good thing. But should we take that step back and say, this thing, Hoover, which is there, is going to be there, is renewable, and is providing good clean power, should we count that in our goal of providing 20% of our resources as good clean power? I think we should. That's entirely the difference that is before us. And I ask that we vote for the substitute for the majority report to say, let's count it and give our ratepayers a break.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm standing in support of Mr. Cardenas's minority report. Because, and as Mr. Cardenas stated, when we adopted several weeks ago his motion, which said that we should have a 20% by 2017, we did not include Hoover Dam. It's like saying afterwards, you want to get credit for something you did after the fact. And I was, Ms. Misakowski, one of those people who did not vote for the water increase. You're right. And I didn't vote for the water increase because we were told different numbers, it was, this was on the water side. Again, the numbers continue to still change, and that's why I didn't vote for it. In this instance, we're talking about the power side. We are talking about something that we have worked very, I think diligently over the years to ensure that we have greater green power and that we protect our air and water. I think that, yes, other cities may have included it in their goals. But I believe the city of Los Angeles has to take the leadership role, and sometimes we do things differently and for the right reason. And so I believe strongly that what we should do today is adopt the minority report, that we want to start investing in our clean energy technologies to reach that 20% goal. And today's vote, as indicated by Mr. Cardenas, is not that we are spending more money for Hoover Dam. We will still get our energy from Hoover and the same rates, but we should not count it as that renewable source. I think we need to make sure that we take a leadership role on this issue for renewable energy on the environment and reach that goal in 2017. We all took the vote before that we didn't want the state to tell us how to do that and the numbers, but that we would, as a city, take that responsibility. So we're standing here today saying, we are taking that responsibility. We're taking that responsibility on having clean power in the city of Los Angeles, increasing it by 20%. And I believe that we should adopt the minority report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Excuse me. And thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership on this issue and for really showing that we can discuss both the health of the city, the health of our department, and the health of the ratepayers all at once. I think that's a very important discussion. And when we use words like that there's an obligation or a cost, I think we can easily flip that to the other side. I've talked here about, and we've seen in the Los Angeles Times, the expression, the cost of living cheap, that the health costs, that the long-term costs that we have sometimes for getting a cheaper nickel today, we pay for in our own family's health, our own community's health, as well as the health of the entire region and sometimes other places like Utah. The important thing moving forward, and I spoke with Mr. Darcy yesterday about this too, is that looking at, as we look at green energy and we look at green industries moving forward, is making sure that they're good paying jobs, making sure that we build an industry and an infrastructure here locally, the making Los Angeles a Silicon Valley of energy technology, at the same time, we do that in the most responsible way. And I think that's a place where the environmental community, the labor community can and will come together. I want to thank the environmental community for pushing us. We can't not do wrong by trying to get greener and greener and greener in a city that still has the worst air quality in the country, in a city where we have peaker plants that are right here in the city, that if we can't sometimes in the foreseeable future meet our goals, we will have to deal with right where we live. I support Mr. Cardenas's position. Mr. Padilla, who's not here today, I know has been a strong leader in this area too. But we have to tie it into a wider strategy. Green industries means jobs here in Los Angeles as well as clean air here in Los Angeles. And as we are at the forefront of that, as DWP has been in its historical past, looking at that department, not just as a provider of good water and good power, but also of economic development itself in the region, that should bring all of our dogs on the sled together so that we not only have the DWP, but we have our workforce investment money, our tax reform, each piece of that working one, working together. I would like colleagues to make the motion, Ms. Gruel, for a five-minute public hearing if there's an objection. I know there are some people, and I think even though this was heard in committee, it would probably serve us well to just have a short, you know, one-minute comments from folks. So if there's no objection, I would move that and move that we exclude counting Hoover Dam in our renewable portfolio standard. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for a public hearings, or a second?
Second.
Seconded. Is there any objections? Seeing none, we will then move into public hearing at this point. Call first Lee Wallach.
We've had lots of conversations on this issue. I want to thank the council for entertaining this issue and for coming out so passionately and having this discussion on both sides. We do need to bring fiscal order to the DWP. We need to create more jobs. We have some of the best people in our city working on both those. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. We shouldn't, you know, stop this process or even slow it down in order to achieve that. We can make this and develop this into a win-win situation, jobs for our folks and fiscal accountability for our city. I think you have to also look when you're comparing who is using and counting large hydro out there, Edison, PG&E, no one else our size counts this, saying that we have so many people or other, you know, other municipalities are counting this, it's just kind of like our nation saying that we have a whole coalition across the world, you know, and we have two or three, maybe including Poland, you know, siding with us. There's a small group of individuals that are counting large hydro. We can do better in this city. And I'll leave some of the other points to my colleagues.
Thank you. Mary Labano and Roberto Harrelson.
Good morning, and thank you to the council for allowing us this time. As my colleague Lee mentioned, we have been working on this issue with you, together with you, for over two years now, and with your leadership, the leadership of Mr. Cardenas and the council. We passed a strong RPS on June 29th. Let's stick with it. That's all I have to say. I'm with Global Green USA. Thanks.
My name is Roberto Harrelson. I'm with the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. Back in May, we took a possession. Back in May, we took a possession on renewable energy. We put that motion forth, it was passed by our board, and since then, I have gone throughout the city and spoken at over 12 neighborhood councils, all the way from San Pedro up to Northridge, and I've gotten a very good idea of what the ratepayers of Los Angeles want. And although the ratepayers of Los Angeles will always want low rates, they also want low rates 13 years from now too. And I'm asked primarily two questions when I go to speak to the neighborhood councils. One, why are you here? Because isn't this a done deal? Well, here we are, so obviously it's not a done deal. The second question is, what about Hoover Dam? Why can't we count Hoover Dam as well? And I explained to the neighborhood councils and the people at the boards that the impetus for a renewable energy portfolio standard is to build a base for new energy in our city, and that by including things like the Hoover Dam, we're not doing the very best we can to build that base that we can count on 13 years from now. So I really want to encourage you to push forward for more green energy, to not include the Hoover Dam in this portfolio standard, and to allow us to continue to build a better base for the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Last three speakers will be Jim Stewart, Martin Schlaggader, and Brian Darcy. And as you go a running short type, please stick the...
Yeah, I'm Jim Stewart, representing the Sierra Club Los Angeles and Earth Day Los Angeles, and we are very much in support of Cardenas' motion. We hope, and we really want to thank the council very much for its strong stance relative to protecting our environment and slowing down global warming. Thank you.
Okay.
Martin Schlaggader with Coalition for Clean Air. Appreciate your continued attention on this. The leadership from the Commerce Committee and Councilman Cardenas has been extremely important. That's why we're here today. That's why the DWP is making progress today, and we're excited about what's in front of you, the framework for pursuing renewables. I want to make sure there's enough time for the final speaker. All of you know my position and the position of Coalition for Clean Air and the many groups that have been supporting this for the past years. Continue that. Keep it up. Thank you very much.
My name is Brian Darcy. I'm the business manager of IBW Local 18, representing 7,800 of the 8,200 employees that work there. We work in those plants. Local 18 was formed around building the Hoover Dam 75 years ago, and our members, blood, sweat, and tears, and a number of people died building the Hoover Dam, so we have a kind of emotional attachment to it, aside from the fact that it is renewable and it does provide one cent power. It's important to not repeat history by examining the past. The truth is, is that we do not have a level playing field. The Department of Water and Power threw, and I know Antonio was there in Sacramento at the time that AB 1890 was passed, and Local 18, among other utility workers, locals in the United States and in California, lobbied very extensively to allow for municipal utilities to be separate and distinct from IOUs in adopting deregulation. We are the only integrated, fully vertically-integrated utility in the state of California. That means we have transmission, generation, and distribution. We also have extra capacity. Having extra capacity allows us to keep the lights on not only in Los Angeles, but in Los Angeles County and the environs. We have one-third of the transmission. To do this in a way that does not give us credit for hydro, particularly Hoover Dam and the plus 30 megawatt units along the Owens Gorge, would put us at a disadvantage. Because if one is to examine the Edison portfolio, you will find that Edison gets 90% credit for all of its qualifying facilities that allow it to meet its goals now. If you eliminate, all of those, by the way, are prior to, are in the 1980s, so they do get credit. So putting us at this is not having a level playing field, and quite frankly, there's a certain hypocrisy by not allowing for hydro renewable power to be included.
Thank you, Mr. Darcy. That concludes the public hearing. We're now returning to council member discussion. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, members, I rise in support of Mr. Cardenas's motion, and I do, although I am one of those individuals that Ms. Miskowski referred to, not by name, you should have done it, who don't support the rate hike, and I don't because I think there is a lack of management controls at the DWP. Management controls that a number of us have spoken to with respect to waste there, and the idea that we would, anyone who supports this is somehow disingenuous, I think, is an unfair characterization of our position. The truth is, reasonable people can disagree. There's no question that the Hoover Dam is a renewable source of energy, no question that some municipalities count it within their 20% goal. There's also no question that we have the dirtiest air anywhere in the nation. There's also no question about the fact that in a city with the dirtiest air anywhere in the nation, we, it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to address that. And it seems to me that addressing this issue of renewables, when we voted for 20%, many of us knew we had Hoover Dam. When I wrote my letter in April, I knew that Hoover Dam was online, and I meant 20% above that. I want to lead the nation, not only, and I think Councilmember Garcetti said, had a very good point, not only lead the nation in the percentage of our renewables, but also lead the nation in developing a renewable and alternative energy industry in Los Angeles, ground zero for the dirtiest air, the place where we're closing down our beaches because our waterways aren't clean. I realize that some of us would like to be, you know, compared to the states at the bottom of the, of that continuum. I want to lead the country, and that's why I support this. Now, having said that, I also realize that there are costs that are associated with this, everybody, and we should all realize that. Those costs certainly aren't costs that can be easily dismissed, but I can tell you, if we can develop an industry in this region, and I believe that we can, for alternative fuels and alternative energies, I spearheaded the effort to make the buses the cleanest fuel bus system in the nation, we should have in this region, a place, a factory that builds those engines. We should be focused on developing those industries, and so I support this. But I also support the idea that Mr. Garcetti said, again, I hate to point to you twice, but I will, that it seems to me that there shouldn't be a conflict between the idea that we're moving in this direction and also supporting good, middle-class jobs that have healthcare and wages. And I can tell you, I support project labor agreements, and I will take anyone on in any community that doesn't support that issue. I support prevailing wage, and we support the idea that neutrality agreements are important and that there shouldn't be a decision, good jobs versus alternative fuels and cleaning up our air and our waterways. And so for that reason, I support this measure. I think it's a forward-looking measure, Mr. Cardenas. I applaud you for coming up with it, but I also believe that there's no conflict between protecting the air and our water and supporting our environment for the future and protecting the good jobs that are the key to a middle-class life in Los Angeles.
Councilman Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank Mr. Cardenas. I'm really, really proud of what you've done here. You have really, you know, you have fought the good fight. You were on the losing side in your own committee, but you're going to win here in council today, and that's a tremendous victory for you and for the environment. And I want to thank all the environmental groups who have participated in making this happen. It does not happen without all of you. It does not happen without all of you coming down here, having the meetings that you've had over the past week or two, and making the case on the merits. And you're winning today, and you're going to win, on the merits, and I want to thank you for that. I view my vote today for Mr. Cardenas's motion as 100% consistent with the vote that I cast against the water rate increase and consistent with the motion that I put in with Mr. Villarosa to repeal the water rate increase. Because on a larger level, what we're talking about here is accountability. We're talking about accountability at the DWP. A lot of us did not have a lot of faith in the numbers that they put forward justifying or purporting to justify the water rate increase, and still do not have that faith. A lot of us do not have faith in their decisions on environmental protection, and so we, as the elected representatives in the city, want to put this city forward in a more forward-thinking way, on the record, in support of a greater degree of environmental protection. So this is not just a vote about the environment today, it's also a vote about accountability at DWP, and I do hope they get the message. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for writing and ensuring that we deliver that message.
Councilmember...
13 ayes, one no.
13 ayes, one no. Questions called for now?
Now, just a question, if we could have the clerk walk us through the...
Okay, the first item that the council would vote on is the question of whether to substitute the minority report for the majority report. Eight votes are required.
You all in favor? Excuse me, open the roll.
This is, this is the question of whether to substitute. So an a vote would substitute and a no vote would...
One more, Madam Clerk.
The minority report for the majority report.
Mr. Levage.
Point of order. Could we have you walk us through item by item, just so all members are completely clear, what we're substituting for which on an a vote?
Senator, quickly, do you want to explain that?
Just for clarification, there's a motion to substitute the minority report for the majority report.
The majority report would trump the minority report.
The substitute is to substitute the majority report. The vote was two to one in committee for a majority, which said, count Hoover. The minority report by the chair, Mr. Cardenas, was, don't count Hoover. He may move the minority report first. That's the one that says if you don't want Hoover counted, go with that one. The substitute is put the majority report forward. So an a vote on substitute allows the majority report to be voted on.
But, Madam, Ms. Miskowski, the first vote actually would be to substitute the minority report, because the minority report is just submitted for information only. The majority report always has precedence over the minority report. So the vote would be to substitute the minority for the majority.
Okay, so first you vote the minority.
Yes, the first vote would be to substitute the minority for the majority.
Correct.
All right. Everybody clear now?
Ask for a no vote.
Okay. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, two noes.
And the minority report is now before council.
Okay.
And there is an amendment on that, which is a technical amendment?
Okay, we have a, we have a technical amendment?
And it's just considered a technical, so that could be considered with the minority report. So that would be the minority report as amended.
As amended, all right. Now, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
Motion passes. It doesn't change the vote. Mr. Levage recorded as a no.
Majority report would be received and filed.
All right. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions of post and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, October 8th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Move by Mr. Weiss.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused Friday, October 8th, to leave at 12:30 for personal business, and also on Friday, November 5th, the motion is required for the October 8th excuse.
Move by Mr. Parks, seconded by Mr. Reyes.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, October 6th, for city business. That meets council policy. And Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, October 22nd, for personal business. That also meets council policy. And Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused Friday, October 8th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Motion by Mr. Parks, seconded by Ms. Reyes.
And that clears the desk.
This is clear. Do we have any announcements? Any announcements, councilmembers? Any adjourning resolutions? Would all in the audience please rise? Would you all please rise? Thank you. Mr. Garcia, Garcetti.
Okay, thank you. I know that Councilmember Perry on Friday adjourned in memory of Helen Johnson, but I wanted to add a few, oh, you did not? Okay. I, I'm sorry, I would, okay. I know Ms. Perry will want to add some words as well. I'd like to ask you colleagues if we could adjourn in memory of Helen Johnson, who was a friend, somebody I got to know through community garden work, and who was a tireless parks advocate for the city of Los Angeles, and she had been ill for some time with cancer and was taken from us unfortunately, but who made quite an indelible imprint. I think most of you knew her here. I wanted to share something from 2000, a story from the Los Angeles Times, December 16th, 2000, a story about Vermont Square Park, in which Helen Johnson, I'll read from the paper here, pressed the mayor, then Mayor Riordan, for the park's renovation on December 6th, when Johnson confronted him at a community meeting and begged him to look into the situation at Vermont Square, which is just a few blocks from some of the worst damage of the 1992 riots. Johnson complained of drug dealing, fights, gambling, and drinking, all spilling over into the streets around the park. And in response, Riordan unequivocally pledged that the problems would be fixed inside of two weeks. It was her bravery, it was her unflinching desire to make sure that her community had as much as any other community, that she was able to become such a tireless voice throughout this city, and she went outside her own community into making sure that other communities saw that vision of having small community gardens everywhere, and she would help them with kind of technical and political advice, and she was really one of the city's true heroes. And I know that she will be very sorely missed, and I'll pass over to Ms. Perry to say some other words, too.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Helen was a good friend, and she was a special woman, and I truly believe that had it not been for people like Helen and Juanita Tate, I wouldn't be standing here today or having the right to sit here in this chair. She was a great woman and a great mother and a great community activist, and I just want to say that I feel very blessed to have known her and that Marie, Eva, and I were very, very fortunate to be able to see her just less than an hour before she passed away, to be able to see her one last time and to say goodbye and to thank her for all that she did for us and all that she did for our community. She did pass away on September the 28th, and she passed away at home in Vermont Square, and I'd like to give some special acknowledgement to the home hospice care that she received, because I can tell you that as she passed away, she was peaceful and she was comfortable, and we should all have that opportunity. She always worked hard to support her family. She owned and operated her own hair salon in Santa Monica when she was younger and was very instrumental in desegregating the Santa Monica school system. She also worked as a coach operator for the Santa Monica Municipal Bus Line. She was way ahead of her time. She was a woman who did non-traditional jobs. In 1994, she retired from full-time employment and volunteered for her community. She was a resident of the 9th Council District for over 40 years, and I would say that she was maybe the pulse and the heart and the soul of that neighborhood. So when I was a staff member working for the previous council member, Helen came to our office and just carried on about this vacant lot on Vermont and that it was a haven for dumping, and she saw the potential for transforming the space, and she was determined to make sure that it happened, and it did. Now it's still there, and it's still thriving, although we'll have to find someone to take her place, and her shoes are going to be very, very hard to fill. But on November the 26th, 2001, she did sign the papers, and it became official. It was the Neighborhood Community Garden. And I can tell you the great pleasure she took whenever she had stress in her life or disagreements with someone. She always worked it out by digging into the soil, and whenever I needed to find her when her husband Jack was alive, he'd always say, you know where she is, she's just over there on Vermont, just go look for her. She's kneeling down, putting some tomatoes in, something like that, because she was always interested in doing anything that would make living... always interested in doing anything that would make living in the 9th District a better place to live. And she's always going to try, and she always did, and she never quit. This quote that she gave to us, that I've just said to you today, kind of summarizes her spirit. The thing that's most amazing about Helen is, I participated in the memorial service at Bohard Auditorium for Juanita Tate, which was not that long ago. Helen was there as a volunteer, handing out the programs to all those who were in attendance. And I said, "How are you doing?" She said, "I'm going to be just fine." And she was happy, and she was proud to be there. She was very instrumental in renaming South Central to South Los Angeles. It was her letter to me that was so compelling, so personal, so filled with pride about her community, that made me begin the outreach and the letter-writing campaign to make sure that the city changed the indication of South Central to South Los Angeles in all of its documents to reduce the stigma associated with the term. And as you all recall, we were able to do that here in City Council. One of the proudest moments in Helen's life was to be able to stand here in this council chamber with that South Los Angeles sign in her hands. And I can tell you that the photograph that was taken that day is something that was a great source of happiness to her. So many things she did, you may remember that she was, for a period of time, one of Mayor Hahn's animal regulation appointee on the commission. And again, as Mr. Garcetti said, she was very, very active with Mayor Reardon. And they both liked, liked her and enjoyed her and appreciated her so very much that they both indicated that they will be in attendance at her funeral service. She was also an active member and volunteer of the Los Angelinos and was always on hand to give tours. And she was in this council chamber many, many times, and she didn't just rest on her laurels. She would call people up and yell at them, say, "You haven't brought your kids down. You need to bring more children down here. We don't have enough kids coming from South LA or the 9th District." She was just on it all the time. I can't believe she's gone. She is irreplaceable. Her husband, Jack, preceded her in death, and they were a great couple. When I had my campaign, and Jack was a bit older than Helen and had a lot of health problems, she'd drive him over to the campaign office. He'd sit there all day and just enjoy himself, just loving the activity. And you'd see Helen driving at least 85 miles an hour up and down Broadway, back and forth throughout the community. But she has a good and loving family, and she's survived by her two daughters, Lynn and Nikki, and a number of great, beautiful grandchildren. Her viewing will be Tuesday, the 5th, today, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Inglewood Mortuary. And then the funeral will be Wednesday, October the 6th, 10:00 a.m., Calvary Baptist Church at 1502 20th Street, Santa Monica, California. And it's hard to say goodbye, but she will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Ms. Gruehl?
Mr. Garcetti has one more.
I think he has one more. Just had one other one, I'm sorry. Okay. All members on that, Helen. I'd ask that we adjourn also today, colleagues, in memory of Joselito Villanueva, who was the brother of a CD-13 family member who was killed in Iraq on September 27th. He's a brother of a former staff member, George Villanueva, our dear friend. He was a Sergeant First Class Platoon Leader with Charlie Company, 9th Engineer Battalion, 1st Infantry Division in the Army, and he died while serving in Balad, Iraq. He was a resident of Van Nuys, his family is from Van Nuys, California, here. He was killed by a sniper in an ambush while trying to help an Iraqi national who was driving his truck erratically and rolled it over. And because of this, he was posthumously awarded a Purple Heart, now two of them, and a Bronze Star to add to his other commendations, including two National Defense Medals, four Good Conduct Medals, and four Army Achievement Medals. Sergeant V., which is what he was known as, had a close call last spring when he was riding in a convoy transporting Iraqi prisoners to a collection point. And he was traveling in a Humvee that rolled over, over an improvised explosion device that killed one of his men and injuring him with a piece of shrapnel about the size of a half-dollar through the back of his neck. Could have killed him. It earned him his first Purple Heart. He joined the Army in April 1993. He began his Iraq tour just in February. And I know that it has been an incredible blow to the family and the entire Villanueva family, and especially George. Our love goes out to each one of you. He's survived by his mother and father, Pilarita and Edito Villanueva, and his brothers, George and Lawrence. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, all of you probably saw the news on Friday night and saw in the paper on Saturday morning of the tragic car accident that occurred in my district on the Tuna Canyon. There were three young people in the car. Two of those young people, Christopher Oliver and Nicholas Roth, both 17 years of age, passed away in that car accident. And early indications from LAPD suggested that it was a drag racing incident. Mr. Zine and I just stood just three or four weeks ago in another incident where a young man was killed in drag racing. We've been successful in stopping drag racing citywide for the organized drag racing. What we have not been successful is educating our young people about that, you know, you get to a street corner and you decide you're going to race and the dangers of that. And whether or not this was drag racing or speeding, I think they indicated it was maybe 90 miles an hour on that street. These two young people were from Village Christian School. Both were on the football team, were scheduled to play their first home game of the season that night. Christopher Oliver was excelled as a sculpture student and was enrolled in Village Christian since his middle school. I talked to Dr. Cypas yesterday, who is the headmaster of Village Christian School, who said they were trying to deal with this at their school, with the loss of these two young individuals, and with Michael Lee, who's age 17, who had major head trauma and is currently, I'm not sure of today, but had particularly been in an induced coma to save his life. And it just makes you think about your own children. I've decided my son's not to drive a car ever because you just don't want this to happen or be the individual whose family is dealing with this today. They have more than 35 crisis counselors at Valley Christian, Village Christian, to deal with some of the kids who obviously have been impacted by this. I would like to acknowledge the family of Christopher Oliver, whose parents, Dennis and Susan, his sister Amanda, Nicholas Roth's parents, Vincent and Rose Marie Roth. Christopher Oliver's funeral will be held Saturday, October 9th, at 4:00. This is a private service, as well as Nicholas Roth will have a memorial on Friday at Church of the Way in Van Nuys. The other thing I want to mention is the community that supported this, the family and the police officers that day. I talked to a couple of the officers, as well as Dr. Cypas, and he indicated that individuals who lived on the Tuna Canyon welcomed those families into their home to, as they were waiting to have to unfortunately identify their loved ones. And so I want to thank that community for stepping up to the plate and being, I think, so compassionate and understanding. And just to remind all of us and our, and parents out there, tell your kids that driving like that can, can end your life. And Mr. Zine and I introduced a motion today that asks that we get together with LA Unified School District, with the private schools, and expand on the SOBRAD program that they have to educate about drinking and driving the same and driving at those high speeds. I ranged this weekend from sadness to anger because this did not have to happen to these two young people. So thank you for adjourning in their memory.
Other adjourning motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Elvia Jan Eagle, was a resident of Flint, Michigan. After the death of her husband, Edward, she was left as a single parent to raise five children. She was a widow for over 32 years. One of her children, Melvin, preceded her in death in 1997. Ms. Eagle worked in Flint, Michigan, post office, was very active in the church. She's a member of the Quinn Chapel AME, and then a member of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church. She was born April 27th, 1917, passed away at the age of 87 on Saturday, September, on Saturday, October the 2nd. Funeral service will be held in Flint, Michigan, at Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church on Saturday, October 9th. She's survived by four of her five children, one of which is Reverend Michael Eagle, who is Assistant Pastor at Ward AME Church, person that helps Pastor Copeland on many of his community projects, as a community activist, and a person that has been a mainstay in the community throughout the last several years.
Any other adjourning resolutions? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, I'd like to ask you to join me in adjourning in memory of Gloria Lash. Some of you may have known her from West Side Democratic politics. She was very active in, it seemed, everything on the West Side. She was a member of the Democratic County Committee, former president of the West Side Democratic Club, and one of the founding members of Women's Strike for Peace and Women for. And she also spent a lot of time as a volunteer at an organization called Betzettic, where her son, David, served as director for several years. She was just a wonderful, upbeat, energetic person whom I would see everywhere, and she devoted herself full-time to so many good causes. She will be missed by David and the rest of her family.
All members? Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.